You're going to charge ten bucks for a piece of paper. You're not going to charge five bucks just out of the goodness of your heart. That's not how business works. Business works to make as much money as possible. Now, if the government were to run like a business, we would charge as much as we possibly could for our property. That port is the people of Guam's property. We own that port. That belongs to each and every single one of us. And the funds that come through that port and that that port generate should go to benefit the people of Guam to give us better schools for our kids, to give us better healthcare for our families, to give us better roads so our cars don't fall apart, to give us a better quality of life. And that's where it concerns me with this. Are the people of Guam getting a fair shake out of this? I don't know. I didn't see a good enough analysis of the actual fee structure it's proposed. And that leads to be a problem. So, I'm going to have to speak, I'm going to have to rise not in favor of this bill just because I really didn't see a good fee structure and I don't know whether the people of Guam are getting a good deal or a bad deal. But remember, we are the guardians of the people of Guam's money. And that's what we're talking about here. We're not talking about anybody else and we're not talking about whether revenue is going to go up and whether the cost of stuff is going to go up. Look, if a company could charge you more for a car, they're going to charge you more for a car. Because that's what the market bears, right? So it doesn't matter how, whatever the price of warehouse to say, well, if the price of a warehouse goes up, the companies are going to automatically raise the cost of everything to the people of Guam. That's ridiculous. If the companies could already raise the price of stuff and the people would buy it, the market would bear it, they would have already done so. So I think that's kind of a felonious argument, at least for my understanding of it. So therefore, Madam Speaker, once again, I rise not in support of this bill. Thank you very much.
You're very welcome, Senator Rector. I have Senator Palacios next on the list. You are recognized, Senator.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I share the observation of the last speaker only with respect to the amount adjusted. I admit that this is an improvement from where we are right now, from the current structure. However, I would like to probably see some kind of, I guess, motion to adjust this. And the reason is that, again, I share the observation of the last speaker with respect to the security of the place. Madam Speaker, they have their own police there. You think AK and Triple J would rather have a rented place somewhere outside where they can, they're required to put a light than then hire private security and so forth to secure their place? They'd rather just rent a place down at the port because the police patrol that area by their own port. And for forty-six cents per square foot and an open space, I don't know what that would compare to the outside. But when you're going to compare to the outside, you have to compare in totality. And I say that the port property is premium. The container, they'd rather put it there if it's cheaper because everything is there already. Specifically, the security part. They have their own police. So I would like to see some adjustment. I'm not going to make a motion to do that. But I would support it because I don't know what would be... I know that this is law. I mean, I indicated it in the public hearing. And they say, well, we can adjust it next year and so forth. Well, since we're at it, why don't we do that? And I think they seem to agree with that. It's just that I, of course, we have to have some kind of formula and those things. But in general, the general observation is that seventy-six for a warehouse, which is just premium, again, you have their own built-in police department over there, office space and so forth. They don't need security systems over there for these things. If they had been outside, they have to pay for all these things. I believe that there should be an adjustment here. And let me think about this. However, I support the bill. I said again, it is an improvement from where we are right now. We just have to probably tweak that. But I want to share that observation that that's premium property down there. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're very welcome, Senator Palacios. Senator Pangolin, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, you know, I rise in support of the bill because it makes things better, at least. It allows us to update the rental charges at the port to allow them to recoup a little bit more money for their operations. Now, the debate we have is, is it sufficient or is it enough? And have the methodologies that we've applied to determine what these fair rates should be at the port as they relate to outside space, you know, is something that's going to be debated. Now, to take some of the debate out of the process, the Port Authority hired a licensed certified appraiser to make a determination for them based upon practices of the profession, what would be a fair lease rate for the port property and what is the going rate for property outside? Now, during the hearing, of course, I thought, well, are they, how did they determine what is the rate being charged outside? Is it the advertised rate for leases for these spaces? Or is it really what's the paid rate in terms of the contractual rate that is actually entered into upon the signing of a lease? Because you can always have somebody ask for the moon and, you know, they're just going to offer you a star. So, the response at that time was, of course, from the appraising company was that, no, they actually use what are signed lease rates for these, for the comparison purposes. And, you know, it still left a little doubt in me because, you know, I know that, you know, of leased spaces that are quite a bit higher than what this rate is that is being reflected in these reports. And, you know, granted, of course, the report may take the average or whatever the methodology is versus, I just have, I know of one specific case where a tenant is paying this much for open space that we had to, that they had to make the improvements upon. So, we basically took a shell, leased it, and then made the improvements yourself versus, and it was quite a bit over the seventy-six dollars that is being charged here. So, but that's one, you know. There could be other people that have leased their properties at fifty cents. So when you average the dollar and the fifty, you're at seventy-five, seventy-six cents. So, just based on empirical evidence from my own experience, I questioned that a little bit, but I don't doubt the professionalism and the methodology of how it was done. The next question we asked was exactly what the retiring speaker had indicated. Did we factor in the ancillary services, benefits of being located at, directly on the waterfront, for example, for somebody who has a shipping operation or a warehousing operation? You know, at one time, Madam Speaker, I drove trucks for a living and delivered cargo that came in through the port. So I'm a little bit familiar with how cargo is taken out of the port and delivered to the final consumer. In addition to driving the truck, I also performed, as what you would call an expediter, where we actually cleared all the cargo, get the inspections done and so forth in order to be, to release that cargo to the trucking company I worked for and then drive it off. So, we were a very small operation. As a matter of fact, at that time, we didn't even have a warehouse. We just got the container off the ship, took it over to the side of the road down there in Caravas Island, parked it on the side of the road, opened the container, took out who we had to deliver it to. And if we only got halfway through that container, we locked up that container at night and no hope, nobody came by with a bolt cutter the next day. And it was, and was emptied when we weren't there. And we delivered the goods we were able to unload, come back the next day, deliver the, you know, because we didn't have a warehouse. But that's, you know, the type of work I've done in my life. Fun and great people to work with at the Port Authority. I mean, you know, and some of the people I worked with back then, Madam Speaker, are still at the Port Authority, believe it or not. They're still down there working hard every day, serving our people of Guam. So, again, I bring that up because of the fact that I'm just not speaking out of, you know, just what I know or what I read and so forth. It's actually being involved in the process of handling cargo and working with the port and working with the consumers of the port and making those deliveries myself. So, the question I ask then is, those ancillary services, we would have loved to be able to just park the container inside the yard and then not have to worry about somebody coming by with a bolt cutter because there's a security guard inside the port. So we ask the question, was there some premium factors placed upon these lease rates to account for those things that if you were outside the port property, you had incurred other expenses such as, if you wanted to be absolutely secure and your cargo was valuable, you had to hire a security guard to patrol your compound at night? The travel time with regards to getting your truck from the warehouse through the port, the gas that you use, the wear and tear on that. Whereas if you were right at the port, able to load your cargo right from the warfarie, from any of the warehouses there, you don't have those costs. So therefore, that space of being in the port is more valuable to you. And there's an additional benefit that makes that property more valuable. And in my opinion, you know, your rent, you can charge more rent because you're now shifting the cost of that, of the company from gasoline, wear and tear, time, to now lease space because you're making it all up in that difference. So, what's that accounted for? Again, they say yes. But I look at it and, you know, just from me, again, I'm not a professional in this, but just from being a consumer of lease space and having worked in this, it doesn't seem to reflect that in here. I don't doubt that they did. I don't doubt that the company has a methodology for factoring those in and they did it here. And maybe it's because I haven't rented out a space in a long time. But I do know that I'm renting space now and we're paying, when we started out with an open warehouse space, we were paying quite a bit more than seventy-six cents. And there's an escalation clause in our lease and so forth. So, these are the things that, for me, you know, I think about. And if I vote no on this, does it make it better or does it make it worse? Do we go, do we at least move a little bit closer to making sure that the port gets fair value for the lease space that it have? Or do we go back to the old rate where we know that the port is now undercharging and not maximizing the space that it has that with the rates that we would revert back to? And so, that's the dilemma I find myself. That's the question I ask myself in terms of where am I going to go on my vote on this? The other thing we talked about was, how does the port, how does the rental policy or the, for the Port Authority and this government of Guam relate to the policy that other ports exercise and other governments exercise when valuing the property that they have within their ports as it relates to the properties that are charged for outside? Do they charge that premium and increase the rent because of that premium? Or do they, you know, and the end result is, for example, if you do that, then it would be what we hear the battle cry is. The government shouldn't compete with the private sector. So therefore, let's jack up the rent in the port so that port tenants may decide that it's not worth it to them and they're going to go to the private sector and we drive business to the private sector. That's good when you say you don't want to compete with the private sector. But you could also drive the price so much and so high that you don't have any revenues coming in there because of no tenants because of the great disparity between the two rates. You accomplish your goal of not competing with the private sector by driving everybody out there. But then, your other goal of trying to manage the port operations and keep rates and warfaries rates and handling charges for the services you provide there that can't be supported and augmented by revenues from the real estate that you have because your policy is you shouldn't have people in there and it should all be restricted to the port and its uses. So, you know, those kind of issues. Well, I did talk to the appraisal company captain and associates, I guess, on what is the experience, as we say, with other ports, for example? Because the supposition is that, no, the, we are completely off base here and that other ports and other jurisdictions don't do this, that they charge a premium and so forth. Well, from the information I received and I admit I just received this today in conversation with them because I had asked for that information, what is the leasing policy of these other ports and other jurisdictions and other governments at that hearing? And I saw Mr. Captain up there and I went out and asked him, did you get that information? And he was able to show me a lease with regards to the Hawaii, for example, and the airport properties that the airport and the government of Hawaii owns on that, in that jurisdiction. Well, lo and behold, to my surprise, that the policy seems to be that the government gets a discount to its tenants. It doesn't charge them a premium. That airport-controlled properties that are owned by the ports in Hawaii, for example, in this case, actually charge a lower premium or a lower lease rates for airport property to its tenants than the outside privately-owned projects that are made available to airport-related activities. And the discount varies according to the different airports, but nowhere is there a premium charge. And the discounts range from a seventeen percent below the going rate of private facilities near the airport servicing airport-related businesses. It ranges from a discount of seventeen percent to even up to thirty percent. So, in this one case, at least in this one example, we find that the policy is to give a discount to those that locate their properties within the airport facilities and airport, or locate their business activities within the airport properties that they receive a discount from the government versus being charged a premium. So, at least in this one instance, the, what we think is happening and what we know is happening are two different things. And so I just wanted to point that out also. Again, Madam Speaker, the question for me is, what happens if this doesn't pass? Does it make things better or does it keep things as they are? And we then are not maximizing, at least as much as we can, the economic value of the port property down at the commercial port of Guam. And in this case, of course, the property of the people of Guam. Are we maximizing it or are we not maximizing it? Well, if we don't pass this bill and we do nothing with the current rates, then we are regressing and we are not maximizing and getting the, at least, the best value as we can based upon what has been performed and the studies that were being presented. And the representation is that this is the best value that we can in terms of charging these rates at this time using the methodologies that have been used to perform these analysis that we are, we will not be maximizing the economic value of that port property. And doing it and enacting this and maybe working in other ways to continue to refine the policy of the, and looking at the different factors maybe or that are used to determine these premium benefits that get incorporated into the base lease rate and continue to work with that once this is passed, I think is, for me, at this moment, the better way to go. I'm not totally satisfied, but is it going to be better? And are we going to increase the recoupment of and utilization, exploitation, I was trying to get away from using that word. But are we going to, is this going to exploit the economic value of the properties down at the port to the benefit of the port and the people of Guam versus not doing so? I believe it does. If we retain the current lease rates by not passing this, then we are exploiting the economic value of the port property there to the benefit of the tenants and the private sector and not getting a fair deal for the people of Guam. So, those are the things and the rationale that have gone through my head in the examination of this presentation before us. And I guess I'll answer that question when I vote yes or no. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you very much, Senator Pangolin. I'm going to take a minute recess.
Actually, see, we're talking about the fees and, of course, this is in section two. And I'm drafting the amendment, it's a simple amendment, that the rates under this section, which is section two, shall be subject to a two percent surcharge for the purpose of providing additional funding for public safety, law enforcement, and security. Two percent on what? See, two percent on the forty-six cents as well.
That's enough. You've got an excuse to jack up the price.
No, no, two percent of the fees here. No, 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 not the technical indication. This is just, I'm particularly interested in the open yard. And believe me, I mean, Triple J, Missy, AK, they'd rather have their car than they'd rather just leave it there forever because they're not paying for power and they're not paying for security. They're not paying for police.
I agree with Matt, I agree with him, but...
No, building two percent.
We got to pay something though, I mean, well... I want to see this passed, but... What are your thoughts, Tom? I'll go with you.
The legislature is back in session. Senator Vespino, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I move that we recess until 2:00 P.M. today.
We're going to recess until 2:00 P.M. And I advise everyone to please be here to start on time because we would recess early so that then the staff can prepare the hall for the state funeral.
Please can you let us know who's present in the hall?
Madame Speaker, present in the session hall is Senator Cruz, Senator Palacios, Senator Ada, Senator Richter and yourself. There's no quorum.
Thank you very much. We will continue then to sit and wait for the other members to come to the session hall.
God bless these former teachers, but they just...
No, and then you want to get on my radio that, uh, commercial thing, the beach chat, where is the...
Yeah, like commercial.
Yeah, the commercial.
What number are we on?
Just to scan maybe, uh, perhaps Senator Palacios and do a, um, understanding Senator that the, uh, planned surcharge of open space will result in a additional revenue of fifteen thousand dollars. Like, are you doing the surcharge just on the open space?
No, I'm putting it on section two.
On all of them?
Section two. See, section three also, uh, see this section is different.
That's, uh, yeah, section three, that's just the housing re-creation.
Yeah, but section two.
All of it, you're gonna increase by, two or ten?
Yeah, five, five, five.
Five, five, ten?
Yeah, I have, I have.
But you know that every three years, obviously, you're gonna increase by ten. Oh, so, yeah, that's just in there.
Yeah. I see they, the surcharge is strictly, strict, uh, specific, uh, for, for additional funding or, uh, they are pushing for this additional, so, of course, they can divert the other funding away from that or do something that, the ultimate result would be additional money for the people of Guam, let's say, in the end. Because, of course, management can say, "Well, okay, so we're gonna have this, you're gonna give it funds now, five percent surcharge, now equal amount, not fifty, provided from the regular rate." Well, it's up to them, but...
So who is that, sort of, a revenue, uh, the, uh, D A G or...
No, not specifically what the, what the operation.
How about for, as we think, uh, there's obviously, you know, there's also more of these things in there, the non-surcharge, means very possible, just means for target, but there are always other questions, the questions.
I, I'm gonna share with you some information that I just got, for example, the last time they have, they have issued fire was nineteen ninety-six. There are only thirty-five officers, uh, thirty-five staff, uh, three of whom are administrative, nine, one security, nine sons per hour, nine, only one vehicle, everything down, and it's a door. And more and more, they need the services of, what is called a mule or whatever, so that they can patrol between, from there and now, there and now. So, I have that broken knowledge. It's bringing to you as an additional information, because earlier, you know, in this term, I was visiting, or rather, when I had the oversight, I actually made a personal visit here of each of these agencies. And of course, the, the chief indicated to me that suddenly, the generals, we can do additional funding for more staff, but not the breathing every time. And that was even mentioned back when I met with him this minute, because we decided to, uh, the typical, uh, uh, um...
I tell you what, they, they...
The radio, they, they don't have radio, it's good, radio's good, you have radio, they have only the I D. You know, I connect is very expensive, I know, so, yeah, sometimes they only give education, they're using, and that one, it's actually, it's done as, it's contained, you know, it's a, it's a...
Where are you, 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 are you,[1738.58] I'm, 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 activities will increase. On the equipment, madam speaker, they have only three vehicles, two junk, one operational, which is the two thousand three Ford Explorer. And they're saying that they need a four-door truck, something, something that they can put something on the back. Right now, they have to use the Explorer to do those things of the vehicle that they have. Sometimes they get lucky and they get the use of a four-wheel small mule there to patrol between containers and from one point to the other. Remember that the Port Authority has jurisdiction all the way out to the power plant right around that area and all the way to the armored cars. So the vehicle probably is being used for that. Now, inside the fence, inside, of course, the water, the water line, I mean, waterfront, they, they need this vehicle, so they pointed this out. They say four or five, but I'm saying, my point is, there is a need for this. And on weapons, the standard obsolete Smith &amp; Wesson 5906, I don't know why they're still stuck with this. It's the issue since nineteen ninety-six. I think now the standard weapon is the nine millimeter or the, or something greater, or the Magnum thirty-eight. At any rate, since nineteen ninety-six. So considering, of course, the area and their work with the salt spray, they have the ocean, I would think that the maintenance of this would be, would be more than just a regular police officer out in the street. They're okay with the uniforms, there was, there was issued five sets, but next year they will only be issued two sets. But this is according to the standard for all law enforcement positions, it's two sets per year, every year. That's why they have this uniform allowance. I'm surprised to find, I'm surprised to find out that for the other needs, there's no armored vest, not even for any kind of emergency. Probably they don't need one for each one of them, but it's nice to have at least three or four. You don't, I mean, you don't know what's going to happen. The handcuffs, of course, these are durable items, but the last issue was in two thousand seven. I don't know what is being done for replacement. I think that there's an expectation and a normal warranty for replacement or just not negligent laws, but things like that. At any rate, that was the last time. Flashlight, last time they were issued, two thousand seven. And you know what this means, madam speaker, is when you issued only one time, then they ended up, then they have to pay for it. I know that. Communications, I'm surprised there's just no two-way radio for instantaneous communication. Right now, they are using iConnect, which is not as instantaneous as a two-way radio. It working, but it's not modern equipment for modern police operations. And they're saying that perhaps maybe a K-9 one day. Right now, they don't inspect the container for explosives. Of course, the containers are sealed and undisturbed, and at point of opening, there is always a customs officer. It's my understanding that the customs officer, of course, look for contraband. There is a need, but maybe not urgent. The point is, they pointed out these things. Definitely, madam speaker, the five percent surcharge can go a long way into this. And I don't know if I'll mention now, but I was just consulting with the chairman that made the markup, that based on the current rental income, the five percent surcharge would reflect about a two hundred thousand dollars additional for police operation. And again, referring to the table, the five percent, it would increase from one sixty-three to one point seven four one, which is a little over eight cents. And for the warehouses, from seventy-six to seventy-nine point eight. And of course, for the open yard, it's forty-six cents, it will increase to forty-eight point three cents on a five percent surcharge. I like to emphasize that this provision does not apply to section three, which is the lease on communications, telecommunications and so forth. Those are pretty safe and tucked away and does not really require the, I guess, the attention of the security and those things. And I like, I ask my colleagues to consider this, and considering, of course, the information I provided attached to the amendment with respect to the need of the port police. Thank you, madam speaker.
Thank you very much, Senator Palacios. On the amendment, are there any speakers? Are there any objections? No objections? Is there anyone who would like to speak or didn't have the opportunity to speak? Otherwise, I will go ahead and allow the author, Senator Ada, to close. Senator Ada, you are recognized.
Madam Speaker, thank you very much, and I want to thank my colleagues for the deliberation and the discussions that they have added to this particular bill. I just want to make one comment, and that is the fact that it took the port twenty years to finally get an increase in its current rates. Not that they didn't try, because they did in, they did try in nineteen ninety-one and in nineteen ninety-six to get the rates increased, and in both times, they, of course, the rate increases were disapproved at the governor's office. The, this time around, so then the question, it kind of begs the question, are they going to have to wait another twenty years before those rates will receive the necessary review and adjustment again? And if you notice in the bill, of course, that particular concern is addressed by the fact that it requires that the port conducts a triannual assessment on its properties and to in fact take a look to see if the rates that it is charging should be increased to be compatible with the current market rates. In addition to that, if for some reason the study finds that there is no, that the rates should not be increased based on what's out there in the marketplace, the bill actually provides that there shall be a minimum of a ten percent increase in those rates. So I think in that case, that translates to about a three point three percent increase in lease rates annually, and I think that will take care of this, this need. In addition to that, of course, there are other revenue generators of the port, from the tariffs, from the use, from the use of the port facilities by the carriers and whatnot. And those components are also being reviewed by the port to ensure that they are properly adjusted. Because as we move forward, and once their master plan becomes finally approved by the legislature, which of course, final approval is pending the port's middle of its implementation plan, its financial feasibility plan, and its economic impact analysis, then that piece will be ready. But as they move forward to modernize that plan, they're certainly going to need to be able to generate the revenues to service the debt that they will inevitably have to obtain in order to achieve their modernization goals. So certainly, the adjustment of the lease rates is just one small step in that direction, So certainly, the adjustment of the lease rates is just one small step in that direction. And I want to thank my colleagues and urge my colleagues to vote for this bill, support this bill when it comes up for voting. Thank you.
I want to take a minute recess.
That's correct. For the collective education, those are monthly fees of $500,000. We made that correction earlier in Section 3C. So.
Thank you very much. We're back in session again. So on the motion to place Bill 78 as substituted by the committee and further substitute in the floor down to the third reading, is there an objection? No objections ordered. Thank you very much. Like to recognize Senator Pangolinan on Resolution Number 29.
Madam Speaker, I do have an amendment that I will offer, but it's being copied, and I'll begin talking on that. Madam Speaker, I'd like to move that Resolution Number 29-COR be placed in the third reading or in the voting file.
And you would like to speak on it?
Yes, I would.
Okay, please continue then.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, Resolution 29, even with all the problems that we're facing, gives us an opportunity to take a step back with everything that we're facing and remember someone who was faced with the same challenges we're facing at the time that he lived and worked in service to our community and to our country and our nation. And it would be to recognize the achievements of Mr. Juan C. Pablo, a resident of Barigada and a career postal service employee, who rose through the ranks of the postal system through the merit system when the post office was reorganized after serving many years under the old postal service system. But after the reorganization and the implementation of the merit system within the postal service, rose through the ranks continuously by showing dedication and exemplary leadership and service and performance in his position as a postal service employee. And he rose all the way to the rank of Postmaster of Guam and became the first career service employee of Chamorro descent that was able to move up through the ranks under a merit system program at the postal service and was finally placed as the officer in charge and ultimately the Postmaster of Guam and achieved that distinction. And the resolution is a resolution to request the Congresswoman Madeline Bordaliu to introduce legislation in the U.S. Congress that would recognize this achievement of Mr. Pablo by dedicating and naming the Barigada Post Office, the Guam Main Facility in Barigada, in his honor. Now, this is not unusual for this type of recognition for employees who have dedicated service. If the facility was a local facility, this would not be required to be done through the congressional action. But because of the fact that the post office is a federal facility, that this would petition the Congresswoman to introduce the legislation in the U.S. Congress, who has the authority over the naming of federal facilities, and request that it be named the Juan C. Pablo Guam Main Postal Facility. Mr. Pablo began his service, of course, way before the Guam Post Office in Barigada was built. As a matter of fact, it is through his effort and recognition and desire to improve the services available to the people of Guam provided by the United States Postal Service that he pursued during his tenure funding necessary to improve that service by the construction of a brand-new and modern facility. Now, I don't want to take away really from the achievements of other distinguished members of our community that have served in that capacity, but I do want to request my colleague to support Mr. Pablo's rise through the system, recognize the hard work that it was required and the exemplary performance that was needed in order to achieve through the merit system within the postal service, the distinction and the honor and privilege of serving as the Postmaster of Guam. And so this would do that. We did this, the Congresswoman did this when immediately after, of course, we saw the unfortunate and horrific accident in the Apollo mission, in one of the Apollo missions, that saw, of course, a person who had grown up on Guam and contributed, and really just grew up on Guam and went to school here, where she introduced legislation almost immediately to name one of the Dodea schools after him, and of course, that is astronaut William McCool. And so we're asking for her to take that same initiative through our urging to recognize Mr. Pablo's contribution to the community, the example that he set for everyone in our community of the value of hard work, of achievement through a competitive process, where he was competing really with all other employees within the postal service for that position. So when they named him Postmaster, it wasn't just who on Guam can take on this position. It was really who within the United States, entire United States postal system merits appointment to that through the competitive process, and Mr. Pablo excelled in that respect and was able to demonstrate through his service and his commitment, and through that competitive process, earned that position. Madam Speaker, Mr. Pablo's contribution was not limited, of course, to his career and his service to the United States government in the U.S. postal system. Mr. Pablo used whatever he had in terms of the abilities and the skills that he had that he learned through the postal service to contribute to the community. Mr. Pablo was a very active member of the Catholic Church in Barigada and actually was also one of the founding members of a group of Barigada residents who put together the plan to get the financing necessary to build San Vicente Church that you see today. And it was through his contribution and his efforts, along with many other residents of Barigada, but he was certainly part of the group that spearheaded that endeavor and resulted in a church in which the residents of Barigada can worship their god in that process. And so he was not only a career serviceman, but he was a community man. And he was very instrumental and very open to everybody in the community, and everybody could approach him to give them advice, to give them guidance, to give them an example of hard work and where it can take you. And so it's not only his efforts in service to the postal service, but the fact that the man was a community man, and that's the type of leadership, that's the type of life that we want to recognize and honor and hold up as an example to the many young people in our community today. And so I ask my colleagues for their support. But as I started saying, Madam Speaker, Mr. Pablo was not the only resident of Guam or even Chamorro who had a distinguished career in service to the country in the postal service. So I didn't want to leave this resolution all by itself without acknowledging those individuals. There are other postal facilities on Guam that perhaps we can look for, look at, and maybe recognize one of the other gentlemen who preceded Mr. Pablo as a postmaster and serviced as postmaster. And the only distinction between them, of course, and Mr. Pablo is that these individuals actually served in those capacities through the appointment process rather than through the merit system process. And that's not because they couldn't compete, that was because that was how that position was filled at that time. The post office was not, did not have a career ladder, did not have a merit system at the time. And so these individuals are distinguished individuals, members of our community, with whom the United States government and the appointing authority over those positions reached out to the community and put these individuals in place. So I did want to ensure that we don't detract anything at all. So I wanted to add the following whereas clause in the resolution, and that's been passed out. And it would add three whereas clauses, and they would read, "Whereas, the United States Postal Office has a long history on Guam, and for over 100 years, Chamoros and non-Chamoros on Guam have served as dedicated public servants, serving as postal employees and postmasters on Guam. And whereas, records indicate that at the National Titan of Paris, James H. Underwood, John J. Underwood, Tomas Santos, and Juan Pablo served as postmasters on Guam by direct appointment of the United States government between 1901 and 1973. And whereas, the United States Postal Service reorganized in 1971, the selection of postmasters since that year being governed by the merit system, and Juan Pablo in 1973 became the first Chamorro to be promoted to the position of postmaster on Guam by application of the merit system." And then it would follow that the rest of the resolution would follow that. And so I ask my colleagues for the support of the amendment, Madam Speaker.
Are there any objections? No objections ordered.
And then, of course, Madam Speaker, I ask my colleagues for the support of the resolution as amended and move that it be placed in the voting file.
On the motion then to place in the voting file, no objections ordered. Very good. Thank you very much. Senator B.J. Cruz, can you come up here?
We're now in Resolution 29, I mean 41. Speaker Wympad, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I'd like to make a motion to place Bill, I mean Resolution Number 41-COR in the third reading file, but I would like to briefly discuss it or talk about it.
Please.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, this is a resolution which is really mandated by law for the legislature then to introduce a resolution to appoint then an alternate director to the Guam Visitors' Bureau Board of Directors. The other positions are normally appointed by either the speakers that are regular members of the board and by the governor, but in this one case, there will be one alternate. I wish it wouldn't have been an alternate, it would be a great person to actually appoint to be a part of the GVB, and that's Mr., we all know him as Bert Umpinko, who we all know him as well as being the Mr. Tourism. So his appointment then is required by law and for us to consent then by the legislature to be, for him then to become a member of the GVB as an alternate director. So I ask my colleagues to please support his appointment. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers? There being no other speakers, Madam, we'll move it down into the voting file. Are there, Mr. Majority Leader?
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, notwithstanding the House rules, I move that we take Bill Number 43 from the third, from the voting file and bring it back to the second reading file, because we understand that the author of Bill 43, Senator Guthers, has a simple amendment to make to that bill.
Are there any objections? No objections, so ordered. We'll recognize Senator Guthers on Bill 43.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Thank you, Mr. Speaker. The amendment is very simple, and it was passed out yesterday, is to add a new section to Bill 43. And it reads, "Neither the government of Guam nor any of its instrumentalities shall enter into any cooperative agreement or memorandum of understanding with any department, agency, or instrumentality of the United States federal government, which in any manner can be construed as providing tacit or express support of federal jurisdiction over Guam land, waters, historic sites, or artifacts, or other Guam resources without the express approval of both the Guam Legislature and the Governor of Guam." Mr. Speaker, the amendment, I think, is really self-explanatory, but we just want to ensure that in the event that this government and this legislature agrees to any leasing or subleasing of any land for any federal purpose, that the jurisdiction over the land, the waters, the historic sites or artifacts, or other Guam resources on that land would remain with the people of Guam, and that the legislature and the governors shall be, of course, involved in this process. So that's basically the nature of the amendment. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
On the amendment, are there other speakers who wish to speak on the amendment? Senator Pangolinan.
I'm okay with the amendment. I like it. I just wanted to kind of take a look at another section of the bill to ensure that, I was looking at the bill as drafted, and so I have an amendment to Section 4 of the bill.
Do you wish a one-minute recess?
Yeah, we have to. And so I support her amendment, but would ask to be recognized after the vote on it.
Thank you. You're still recognized. Anybody else wish to speak on the Guthers amendment to Bill 43? There any objection? There being no objection. The bill is amended. Any other speakers on Bill 43? Senator Pangolinan, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, I mean, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, Section 4 of the bill currently, of course, requires legislative approval of these leases, and it reads, "Notwithstanding any other provisions of law, government-owned real estate property shall not be sold, leased, subleased, exchanged, or otherwise transferred without the prior approval of the legislature by duly enacted legislation which specifically authorizes a particular sale, lease, exchange, or transfer, and includes the real property description of the government-owned real estate with particularity. This section shall not apply to land use permits, but shall apply to any transfer to the federal government or any agent of the federal government of land owned in the name of the government, including but not limited to, of course, agencies, public corporations, Chamorro Land Trusts, and the ancestral lands." And if I read that, it makes me seem to think then that they need to come back for residential leases, and I think that's not our intent. And so my amendment would be to add, shall not apply to land use, after the word "land use permits," apply or residential leases by the Chamorro Land Trust Commission pursuant to its rules and regulations, so that it doesn't apply to land use permits and the residential leases that they have to come back for the legislature for approval.
Is that amendment clear to everybody, or do you require it in writing? Does everybody understand the amendment? Any objection to the amendment? There being no objection to the amended amendment, it's so ordered. Are there any other speakers on Bill 43 as? Who's going to motion it back up?
Speaker, I think that exhausts the second reading file, so I.
Okay, so will they be motioned to move 43 back to voting file?
Oh, so moved, Mr. Speaker.
All right. There being no objection, so ordered. Majority Leader, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I have exhausted the second reading file, then move that we proceed all the way to the voting file and recess until 4:00 p.m. on Friday. Or actually, oh, yeah, so we don't have to have another. Okay, Mr. Speaker, because we're currently in session, I then moved that, notwithstanding the House rules, we revert back to motions.
All right, we're back in motions. Any objection? On motions, Majority Leader.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I move that we resolve into the committee of the whole for the purposes of having a state funeral for the former Speaker Carlos Titel, and that we recess until 8:00 a.m. tomorrow morning.
I think it starts at 8:00. Are you going to be?
We don't have to have session anymore.
Okay, just.
7:30 a.m., Mr. Speaker.
Thank you. Please remember, everybody, the state funeral begins promptly at 8:00. The family is asked us to finish by 9:00 so they can go to the church, so we need everybody here on time. Thank you. We're recessed until 9:00 tomorrow morning. The legislature's, I mean, 7:30 tomorrow morning, the legislature is recessed until that time for a state funeral.